Hey Greg.
Howdy.
Hello Joe.
Good evening. How are you?
Fine, thanks. Robert?
How are you doing?
Okay.
I'm your host this evening, so I have to keep watching for people.
Sure, yeah. I'd like to have Scotch on the rocks, please. Why not, Brian?
What was that, Don?
Why not, Brian?
Exactly. Are you in a different room tonight, Michael, or just a different angle? You're not in your normal space?
Uh, this is where I've been the last few meetings. My wife is downstairs with the TV on, so my office, you know, opens up to that room, so I'm in her space.
Joe, are you gonna be sharing your screen?
Yes, yep.
Okay, I made you a co-host, so you should be able to do that.
Okay.
Evening.
Hopefully, people can see that. Yeah.
I miss flowers and blue skies.
Don't we all? Yep. Greg, is Jeremy joining us this evening?
It was my understanding.
Okay, mine as well. Um, in fact, I didn't hear from anyone that they weren't going to be here, so.
Just let two more in, so.
Okay.
All the commissioners may be here now.
I think we are, yes. Wait just a few minutes to see if Jeremy's coming on.
Okay.
Just finished a lecture for the Wayne State Planning Programs Graduate Program Land Use Class. I just got off of it five minutes ago and I told them one of the things about, they're asking about the difference between being a planner in different fields. And so one of the things about being a consultant is you get to do multiple meetings all on the same evening. Not that you don't have to drive, you even get to do more of them.
Used to call it hitting for the cycle if you could go for four nights in the week.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's not a selling point, I don't think, Rod.
That's making it different.
Should all be here now.
Okay. Um, well, folks, we will call to order this special meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. While this is a official public meeting, our purpose is a discussion of our ongoing master plan, and so be carried out fairly informally. Greg, you and I didn't get a chance to discuss this, but do you want to make any opening remarks?
Um, well, I sent you all an email kind of summarizing where I, I thought we were at. You know, and as you know, the, the public engagement piece that we had been working on related to master plan itself, as opposed to the public engagement that we did for the economic development pieces of master plan, didn't go as exactly as planned. And what we would like to do going forward is to take another month, and we're gonna take a shot at that from the city side. I gave you some draft survey questions. You know, if anybody has thoughts on those tonight, we can discuss them, or you're welcome to continue to email any thoughts that you might have to me in the next few days, but we do want to try to get that up and running for, for February. Other than that, Gipfels is gonna update us as to where they're at, what they have done, and what next steps are as we move forward with this. You know, we're a bit behind schedule, but it's to be expected, I would say, given the pandemic. You know, I think we started approximately nine months ago, maybe, and we'd envisioned it as a year-long process. So as I say, we're probably a bit behind, but it's not horrible, given the circumstances, and we'd rather do it right than do it fast, so. With that, I'll let Joe and Rod present what they've prepared for this evening and and lead us from here.
Thanks, Greg.
Yeah, and I just wanted also to make sure we introduce Howard Cone from the Chesapeake Group. He's on too. He's gonna be speaking a little bit later after Joe goes through the presentation. He's the one that's been leading the market assessment and the economic development plan component, so. So I'll turn it over to Joe, and he's gonna take us through most of the slides.
Sure, yep. So these slides are gonna hit some highlights of the, the input we did get last summer. We will be talking a little bit about the goals and objectives, and we've got some policy questions regarding the future land use map and categories that we think will help guide the development of the future land use portion of the plan. So let's get into it. Public input. As you know, the virtual open house, it got a lot of views, but we did not get a lot of survey responses. However, the economic assessment survey that was administered last summer did get a significant response. So we were able to draw some conclusions from that. And the city is gonna be working on gathering some more input this coming month. So just a little info on the characteristics of the responding households. The vast, vast majority of them were within the city limits. And we're looking at, you know, respond, responses from a really wide range of households with very low incomes, very high incomes. The majority have lived in their current home for at least 10 years, so a lot of long-tenured residents in their houses, households. About one-fourth of the households that responded were single-person households. Joe, Joe, in this is in response to what tool? This was the economic assessment survey. Okay, thank you. And nearly all of them live in Adrian full-time. And there were about one-third didn't have anyone employed full-time. That generally reflected the senior and student populations. And then about 13% of households had one or more members that would like to be employed full-time, but are not. So that's sort of the top-line snapshot of, of of some of the responses that we got to that survey.
Uh, Joe, if I could interrupt for just a second, if you want, could you go back a slide, please?
Yeah.
Um, the first line there, 96% of the households reside in zip code area 49221. 49221 covers a very expansive area, much of it not in the city limits. So if all these statistics are based on 49221, they go out to Madison Township, they go out to Adrian Township. In fact, they go out as far as Onsted. So I'm just pointing that out for whatever it's worth that you can't rely on 49221 as being the city, within the city limits.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks for the comment.
No, did you have a question specific to whether or not people lived in the city on the economic development survey, Joe, or Howard?
Howard.
I don't believe we asked that. And you have to remember what the primary purpose of this was to gather information on the market, and there is not a single commercial establishment or really anything else that, that will survive just upon the population of a city of municipality, etc. There are always people in the surrounding areas that are very much as, as much a part of the market as anyone else. And, you know, so from, from a market standpoint, it doesn't matter to us whether or not they reside in the city boundaries or outside of city boundaries.
Thank you.
And that may be true, but I think when you start talking about income levels and educational levels and everything else, there's a wide disparity between what we have within the city limits and the city of Adrian. You know, it's much more wealthy people in the township, I believe. So it could skew your numbers. That, that's my point, so.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with that. On the other hand, what you have to, again, they're all part of the market, so the fact that they will come or will not come to a business establishment in the downtown area or someplace like that is really what we're looking for. And their income levels, one of the things that you have to realize is the income level that you saw there is mean income, and that's very different than the median income that the Census Bureau uses. Usually, the mean income is double or more what the median income is.
And I just want to make a comment as well. Keep in mind that we have specific economic data related to residents in, in the plan as well. This just happens to be the results of the survey that was focused on the market, which is how we're mentioning is a broader area. So we have other data that's more a city of Adrian specific in the plan as well. So we're just talking about two different things, that's all. Thank you.
So zooming into that, that input from that survey a little bit more, we have some information on housing that we wanted to share. Just speaking to the average square footage of, of homes and, and some of the, the, the cost associated with living in, in the city or in the area. So we see average monthly rent excluding those without any monthly payments is, or have monthly, monthly rent and mortgages is 920, so just south of 1,000. But we do have a significant portion that report paying 750 or less per month toward rent or mortgages. And that speaks, of course, to affordability. Many respondents don't have monthly payments, and that's generally due to the amount of time they've been in their homes or that they're living with other family members. Or in the case of students, that their, their housing is, is being taken care of by, you know, other family members, their parents usually.
You, do you, Joe, do you have an observation, Joe, about the house size, the home size, 45% being less than 1,500 square feet seems pretty small to me.
Yes, that's an older housing stock, so tends to be smaller, and also it was built at a time to serve a certain market of, work, kind of a working-class market. So I think they're, they tend to be smaller. They were more affordable then. They're still affordable now.
That's right. It also does present some opportunities for, for adaptive infill. I live in an older neighborhood as well, and I've seen adaptation of some of the smaller homes on my street where, you know, a second story was added to make the house more marketable recently. So that might be something to, to consider as we think about turnover in our neighborhoods. What makes, what will make these houses appealing? What might, you know, potential developer considering doing work in one of these neighborhoods think about when they're looking at these smaller homes, these, with these footprints that are under 1,500 square feet? Did we solicit any information as to owner occupied versus rental?
We have that in the census and from, in the background information, yes.
Okay. So we had, we have that information for the market as well as the city itself, yes. So one of the things that the survey measured was whether people are intending or think that they might possibly move within the next five years. Partly, it's these, a lot of these residents won't move away. They'll move within the area if they do move. So there understanding them is key to understanding future, future housing demand in Adrian. What are they looking for if they were to relocate within the, in the city or within the area? So most of them cited lifestyle, medical, or physical changes as the primary reasons for a potential move in the foreseeable future. And that speaks a lot to older people in particular. The overwhelming majority said they would stay in Michigan if and when such a move occurred. And another potential factor impacting future, the future housing market is the internal creation of new households. So about 13% of the responding households had one person who was likely to create a new household in the foreseeable future, that being someone who's going to leave the home because they're, you know, coming of age or something like that. Or otherwise, striking out on their own to create their own household. And just out of that group, there was another subgroup that had more than one person that was likely to do that. And for those that are, may or they may move or are likely to move, 38%, so they would seek smaller units than the ones they now live in. Again, I think that's really speaking mostly to the older population that might be downsizing at this point. And another 20%, 28% would seek a similar-sized unit. And then over half of those respondents noted that they would, they would like to be near recreation, walking areas or work. They cited that as being very or extremely important. So proximity to recreation and proximity to work where you spend a lot of your time were, were quite important to the people who thought that they might be likely to move. The table you're looking at here was included in the information that we provided. It just gives people's overall impression of the housing options that are available. The professional services that are available. Whether or not they're able to walk to some of their, their necessary regular shopping. The overall shopping experience in the city. Restaurant options that are available. That one actually scored pretty well. People generally think that there's some decent variety. Walking experiences that are safe, comfortable, and interesting. And then availability of places that they can live, walk, or work at near one location. So I think that's gonna favor probably the downtown area where you have the largest concentration of uses and homes. But as you can see, the shopping options really were the one area where, where poor ruled the day. So it does seem like among respondents to the survey, there was some dissatisfaction with their options in, in terms of particularly retail. And that's not terribly uncommon in smaller towns, actually, because it's a more limited geography, and you tend to have somewhat more limited options. Just a little information about the college population here. I'm not gonna get too much into detail unless somebody wants to discuss anything in particular. But obviously, that is a component of your population, the student population for these colleges. Some of them don't live here year-round, of course, because they're not in college year-round necessarily. But some of them do. And we've got enrollment slightly up. And, you know, in the future, you're likely to see enrollment can rise very, very steadily at most institutions of higher learning. A degree it just becomes more important all the time to your earning power, so higher education is an expanding industry. Unless there's anything anybody wants to discuss on that portion of it, I can move on to the goals and objectives. Please, please do. Okay. So in 2007, as part of your master plan, the city adopted a vision statement, and this is the vision statement from that master plan. City of Adrian is a diverse community with a historic downtown and a friendly small-town atmosphere. I would say that's still accurate. Preserving this unique character for existing and future residents is a high priority for Adrian. The city strives to balance the needs of its residents now and in the future, while providing excellent cultural, educational, recreational, and employment opportunities. Safe neighborhoods for all residents, future growth and redevelopment that strengthens the city's traditional downtown and an environment that attracts and retains commercial and industrial investment in the community. I'd like your impressions as a planning commission on the vision statement from 2007. It is fairly comprehensive, and I feel like it still describes the city pretty well. However, if you have any thoughts on, you know, potential things that might be missing from this vision statement, or, you know, just anything else about the statement that, that, that strikes you, I'd be interested to hear them. Two things, I think, because we've given so much discussion to housing, I think we need to say something about housing in it. And that tends to be a kind of a current hot topic. And I realize it's a vision statement, we can't have, you know, five, five lines about housing, but we need to say something about it in, in terms of maybe about our desires to create more varied housing opportunities or something like that.
You could say something like "safe and growing neighborhoods for all residents."
Yeah, something along those lines. Um, and I also wonder, you know, I, our, our countywide economic development office has pretty much commissioners, would it be fair to say that they have really downplayed industrial development these days? And have, are taking more of a focus towards small entrepreneurial-type development?
Yeah, I, I would agree. I think their focus is maintaining those large industries that are here and trying to grow everything else.
So, yep, we've kind of, we've kind of gotten away from encouraging or soliciting new industrial investments and development. Yeah, okay. So maybe we upplay the housing aspect and downplay the industrial aspect. Gotcha. Okay, that's great. Great feedback, thank you.
Well, Michael, would we want to take away industrial? I mean, we I know that there's an emphasis on technology, and maybe we should somehow replace industrial maybe with high-tech or something of that sort.
Um, or could it be adapt, maybe adapt the the, the, the industrial and historic growth centers to meet the demands of the, of the current economy? Maybe something like that.
Something like that, it's just
Gotcha.
Something along those lines, Rod.
Okay.
Okay. Because like I said, our, the, the countywide economic development folks have pretty much said we're no longer being aggressive about trying to attract industrial, new, new industrial business. Okay. Those are very thoughtful comments. I really appreciate that. Thank you. Anything else from the commissioners on, on this? This is kind of sets the tone for it. No? Okay. We will certainly, and we'll certainly, as, as Joe and Rod pointed out, we'll certainly take comments after the meeting to invite via
I, I do have one. And I think there, and I don't know how to word this, but looking at, I think one of the big in terms of building safe neighborhoods and looking at those surveys is looking at a vision of neighborhood building and neighborhood planning. Um, sorry about that. She's very involved in physics already.
Future planner.
Yeah. And kind of almost tailoring a vision towards building neighborhood planning instead of reactable focus of, I feel like old plans always focused on a city in general of pockets. Here's a pocket of here, and here's a pocket of here, but the new plans are blending everything, and I think the vision statement needs to reflect if we're gonna look that way of more of a blended-type building. If people, if people want, you know, the stores closer to their homes, shopping, restaurants closer to homes to walk to, to bike to. You know, you, you, I think that's, that needs to be looked at and put in a vision.
So maybe without using the same words, in effect, encouraging more mixed use.
Right.
Sure, complete neighborhoods where you got a mix of services and residential, yeah.
I like that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, I like that. That's
Yeah, it's good.
Another, another excellent comment. Thank you.
Well, and that, that plays right into walkability as well. So it's
Yeah, it does, you know, and yeah, it's right in line with what we heard from the respondents to the summer survey. All right. Anyone else?
Okay, then.
So obviously the goals of the master plan flow from that vision statement. And I've got the, the original goals from 2007 plus one that was added in 2008 in one of the master plan amendments. The 2015 update did not actually add any particular goals. It did some other stuff. But you know, here we have four of them. There are a few more on the next slide. I didn't want to make the type too, too small. So maintain and enhance the unique historic character and cultural richness of the community. And I think that speaks pretty directly to neighborhood quality. Encourage the development and redevelopment of downtown Adrian as the city's central business district with quality architecture and a diversity of uses that reflects the historic character of the city and contributes to the overall quality of life within the community. And that still seems pretty, pretty pertinent to me. Provide a mix of commercial and office uses outside of downtown at appropriate locations in the community that meets the needs of current and future residents while supporting the downtown's function as the city's retail core. And to me, that could, could evolve a bit to, to point more toward what Commissioner Love was just talking about. That kind of complete neighborhood vision.
Yes, to, to address more of the, well, as you, as you said, Joe, the complete neighborhood, you gotta think.
That's a place to put it.
Yep.
Yeah, like I, I feel you know, don't shoot me, Don, you know, I, we, we support downtown, but people have a misconception that that's all the city cares about. And putting it in there twice to me, you know, it reinforces that thought. You know, we need to work on our neighborhoods. You know, there's certain little pockets where there's some retail space that, you know, could use a little love. But I, I, you know, it, it all comes down to private investment in downtown and around the community. And I feel sometimes that people think why waste my time? Cause it's only about downtown. You know, and that could lead into a big further discussion of everything, but you know, I'm, I'm with Dr. Love there. Like let's, that, that third one there kind of needs to be massaged to say like community business, that kind of thing, or neighborhood businesses.
Sure. Yeah. Making it clear that those, those neighborhood nodes of activity are, are as vital to the community's health as the, as the principal node of activity.
Yeah, you know, I mean, big picture wise, like in Indianapolis, when I lived there, you had these pocket neighborhoods that, you know, when you lived in the neighborhood, the walkability was for the people that live there. And the downtown was for the people coming into town. And that's almost like the node network. And yes, people went off into the, cause neighborhoods had cool little things to go and see as well, but it's almost, I guess, that's what I'm envisioning of trying to be unique in this, especially for this area or in Illinois County would be really unique of, you know, trying to find a way to make this work for Adrian of, you know, having the neighborhoods have like a core of something that could help them build. And then the downtown, of course, is its big investments of bringing people into Adrian.
It's, it's a little difficult given our size.
Well, I, I understand that, but we're also the seat of the county and Hillsdale, and they have a whole lot, but it, it, it just, it gives something to think about.
Absolutely.
In a new way to think about how it could be done.
Sure. I would, I would hope that we don't downplay the importance of downtown. And you know, I know I heard what you said, Brian, you know, I'm a downtown person on buildings there. That's our core. I grew up in a town that had all sorts of neighborhood hubs in Bay City. East side, west side, multiple locations where there were neighborhood retail and commercial areas. I wonder how we can do that here when so much of our stock is filled. I mean, you know, we, we're not talking about implementation now. I think it's a goal to have, but if we go to the east side, we've got to tear down some houses to put in some, some retail. You know what I mean?
Sure. Yeah. In some parts of the city, more than others.
Certainly, but yes, I understand what you're saying.
Well, and that's, and that's not, you know, that's not necessarily a bad thing. There's, there's places on the east side that could use some commercial, you know, initial redevelopment.
It could be as, as simple as adding a corner store in one neighborhood.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yeah.
Or a corner bar, you know.
Or a corner bar.
Exactly.
Exactly.
In the property.
More of those. Yeah.
Understood.
Greg or Mike, is it appropriate if I make a comment?
Or Lynn, please.
Thank you. I don't know if there are more pages of goals, but you know, just it seems like I haven't heard blight mentioned. And that is a priority as I understand going forward. And you know, you don't want to go on the negative thing, but perhaps somewhere in the wording, you could talk about beautification as well. Or something that is going to indicate that that is a priority for the city as I understand it is. Thank you.
Yeah, that, we actually have a point on that in our, our policy discussion a little later too. So thank you for bringing that up. Cause it is, it is certainly a pressing issue.
For those, for Rod and Joe, who don't know, Lynn Punnott is the recently retired executive director for the Habitat for Humanity program.
Oh, okay.
Nice to meet you.
Okay. Anything else on that one before I move on to the next one? Okay. So the, the next one is to provide a variety of housing opportunities and choices while maintaining and promoting Adrian's unique character.
Slide did in advance.
What? I, I had to go back to this.
Okay, okay. You advanced it for a minute.
So I think we've been talking about this already. So it seems like the housing variety thing is still very important. And then here are the rest of them. Encourage the continued development and redevelopment of planned industrial areas in the city to provide jobs and increase the city's tax base while minimizing negative impacts on other land uses. And this strikes me as a goal that is directly affected by what we were talking about earlier.
Exactly. And in fact, we, we just recently changed the zoning on our west side industrial park from industrial to commercial.
Okay, sure.
However, we also changed the Marvin Farm from business and residential to industrial.
Right.
Okay. So
We no longer have an industrial park, by the way.
Yeah.
Just point that out. Well, we did, we don't have really a city owned industrial park. I mean, we, we were just discussing today with the prospective purchasers for you know, the hundred and two acre parcel there at the Marvin Farm. You know, their plans for the future, which you know, while it includes a number of marijuana facilities, would also include other sorts of synergistic uses. I mean, they plan to, as you'll find out next week, plan to subdivide that or create a site convo out of that for a number of lots that would incorporate various uses that would be allowed in the I-1 zone. And then of course we have our other 55 acres to the west of that, which is similarly sound.
Once again, like we discussed on, on page, one of the goals will probably downplaying the industrial development part of it, not, not eliminating it, but just not making it quite so much of an emphasis.
Sure. Yeah. Discussing how the, how the, those lands and uses can be, you know, the, the existing uses can be accommodated, but the, the other land that's available can maybe be modulated to or modernized really just, you know, but more of a tech and, and research focus perhaps. Allowing more of a blending of office and industrial as well.
And I think one of the, in 2007, when we developed this goal, and this is still an issue for us, is that we have a lot of, of fallow industrial property on the east side of town. And when I say fallow, I mean, you know, derelict factories.
Sure.
And so on one hand, we would like to encourage something to be done with those.
Sure.
It may not be industrial redevelopment though.
Sure. Yeah. Okay. So maybe we maybe we adjust that to you know, address what's next for some of the more neglected properties. Okay. And some of the some of the things that are included in the economic development toolbox, which we'll touch on later. You know, might provide some resources for that brownfield authorities and things like that. Could, could help with the redevelopment of those sites because there's usually going to be some sort of issue with the property in terms of what's been done on and what might still be there. Okay. Anything else on that one? So the next one is maintain a transportation network to facilitate safe and efficient circulation within and through the community and promotes alternative modes of transportation. I think the city has made some progress on that since the last master plan. I know there's some striped bike lanes and there's definitely been some, some effort put forth there. And this, the regional trail system has also been coming together recently as well. So that's definitely progress.
I think it should be a continuing goal though.
Right, exactly.
We've made progress in non-motorized transportation. We've gone backwards in terms of motorized transportation. We lost our only cab company in town. I don't believe we have any ride sharing services that service the city. So we're kind of down to just dial a ride in terms of they kind of motorized public transportation right now. I will say that there's a there's a countywide transportation task force that has really stepped to the forefront of late. There's a lot being planned, including potential shuttle with fixed stops in Adrian to go to, to come see it to fix stop. So there's a lot of movement on transportation right now. So I think this is a goal worthy of, of keeping for sure.
Okay, excellent.
Well, that's good. Good to know too.
Don, this is Gordon, and I agree with you about that, but well, first of all, Greg mentioned dial a ride and really not having an efficient motorized means of transportation. Dial a ride is there, but quite frankly, citizens will tell you that it's very inefficient. There's limited hours. They start at like eight o'clock in the morning and they cut it off at 4:30 in the afternoon. I've had people who need to have transportation after that time, you know, they're handicapped or whatever, need evening transportation. So that, that's not the greatest thing in the world. And Don, I understand the shuttle concept. My frustration, quite frankly, was the, or is the fact that the Prometica knew that hospital was going to go where it is on North Adrian Highway or M52. And we knew as a city that that was going to happen, but yet we have no means of transportation to people, to get people out there to the hospital or to the YMCA that's out there now. And all I hear is God, we had a YMCA that we could walk to or bike to, and now we can't even get to it. So I, I'm just throwing that out for everybody's consideration and for our planners' consideration because we really seriously need to do something about effective and efficient transportation in the city.
And some of the, some of the issues I'm talking about address just what you talked about. Prometica is working very hard on it along with the task force. So post, you know, whatever dial ride stops, that's an issue at the hospital and other places. So this is trying to address some of those. So this is the first step, but you know,
and, and I appreciate that. And I think it's an important step and I'm glad to see it moving in that direction. Again, my frustration is the, the length of time before this all happened, that the planning could have been done. And we could have, when the hospital opened, we could have had that transportation. That's not really a topic for what we're talking about today. But again, I, I think it's something we got to think about and, and push forward. And you know, the, the, the planning group that you're speaking to, you know, they need to keep their foot on the pedal.
Okay. Well, so obviously this, this maintain, this, this continues as an important goal for us.
Sure. Yeah. And it really dovetails with a lot of what we were talking about earlier with a lot of solo households. A lot of those are older. And you know, they're going to need options in the future. So yeah, this is certainly an important goal.
Is it more appropriate to say develop a transportation network? Because I don't think there really is one to maintain.
Good point.
That is, that is certainly a fair point. Yes.
Probably a combination. You have a network to some extent of a motorized network, but you don't, it's not a complete, it's not as complete as you'd like it to be. So you want to maintain what you have and grow and evolve into something better.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. If we can strengthen that goal a little bit, that would be
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah. Okay. All right. That, that works. And then the next one, this is the one that was added in 2008. Support the growth in student population at higher education institutions while maintaining the character of the adjacent neighborhoods. So that
a hot, hot button issue in 2008. I'm not sure it still is. Take input from other commissioners on that. At the time, Adrian College was buying up property all the way around their campus and, and expanding. I, I think that probably that is no longer is, is had a button issue as it was back then.
I mean, honestly, I would remove it.
I'd agree.
I'd agree as well. I don't think we've really seen them buy much of anything in the recent years. I mean, they've done a little bit of work with the other entrants, but that wasn't really
Expensive.
Yeah.
Okay. The, the universities all play nice now.
That's true, but, but earlier statistics indicated they're both losing student population. So you know, I agree with what Brian said. Out of there because we've got a declining student population as opposed to an increasing one.
Not to read Adrian College's press releases, but that's
Hey. Look on my buddy up there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm okay with taking that goal out. Yep.
Yeah. That one goes away.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's certainly something we can just remove. Maybe it gets, maybe we can reflect it in, in our, you know, a list of objectives. But yeah, it doesn't need to be a freestanding goal necessarily. Okay. Let's see. Let's skip over the next few because I'm going to be adjusting the, we, we kind of reconsolidated the goals, but I'll be adjusting those based on what we just talked about. So I'm just going to skip over those. We we, we sent over the original objectives from the, from the, the last plan. And you know, I know you haven't had a lot of time to sit with them, but you know, one thing that we would like the, the commission to think about is whether or not any of the You know, one thing that we would like the the commission to think about is whether or not any of the objectives that were listed in the last plan. Are things that, you know, obviously, they were supporting these goals, so we're going to be adjusting these goals and the the objectives will move accordingly. But if there's anything that just really shouldn't be in there anymore, or. Any particularly glaring hole that you can think of. We'd like to know about that. And that that could be something that you could you could. Provide after the meeting if you're not able to give it right now, but. That's just something we'd like you to be thinking about is is take a look at those old objectives. And if there's anything in there that looks like, oh, hey, the city actually accomplished this, so we can. Or or, hey, this needs to be. You know, adjusted or just isn't relevant anymore. Let us know. You know, I think we're going to discover some of that just in the course of adjusting the goals. But. You know, we'll come to you at the next time we see you with, you know, a a list of objectives that we feel support the goals. That we're adjusting tonight, but I would like to know if if there's anything in there that just seems out of place now.
You you can email those to Jeremy and I if you have thoughts on those. Just be careful not to have sort of cross talk amongst yourselves as it relates to that by way of email. But if you're just sending in your individual thoughts to us, there's there's no issue with that.
Does that refer also to the strategies that you have listed?
Oh, yeah, certainly the strategies could, yeah, we we would we would welcome any input on those strategies as well.
Some of the stuff's done.
Yeah, I think those are much more likely to be to be, you know, done or put to bed in some other way.
Okay.
Yeah, it would give us a decent sense of, you know, what's happened in the meantime. Okay, so future land use and policy. We've got the the most recent future land use map is the one as it was modified in two thousand and fifteen. So that was included at the end of. The future land use memo or the land use plan memo rather or attachment. And. You know, of course, this is one of the principal products of a master plan. So a lot of thought needs to be given to this. We had a couple of ideas for. Some potential new categories that might support some of the. Neighborhood. Goals that we were talking about earlier, and I'll 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 address both of those. In a second, but. Looking at the future land use plan from two thousand and fifteen. What stands out to you as needing adjustment? It could be my my principal question.
This is Mr. Watson, I think, uh, one thing I think needs to be done is. Removal of office. That type of thing is going to become. Become outdated soon, and I think it just needs to be lumped into some sort of business district.
Although. Brian, on the other hand, the the zone that we have titled like like Office Service or Office Residential. Is more of a reflection of what's actually there. And in terms of served as a buffer between. Actual commercial districts and residential districts. I'm not saying I'm not saying we shouldn't do what you're suggesting. I'm just saying that that's the other other side of it, too.
Sure, yeah, I I understand the the point, though, which is that. Exclusively office is is becoming more outmoded and and building some more flexibility into that while also keeping in mind that. Some of those areas are serving that buffer purpose is is. Is something that that we should be doing.
We could potentially look at the description of the office category to try to expand it a little more so that it's a little more comprehensive.
We we do not have an office category. We have an office residential category and an office service category.
Right, right.
The office service is. Commercial, commercial services like a a dry cleaner or, I mean, low impact usually, you know, low.
That's typically what's in an office district, right? Personal services.
Personal service.
Nail salons, beauty and barber.
Yep.
All of that.
Have an office residential zone.
Sure.
Where. And 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 frankly, it's more of a descriptive thing than it is prescriptive. It describes a bunch of old houses that have been converted to offices already, so.
Right, right. Yeah, that one certainly it it applies to a pretty specific. Neighborhood and and instead of.
But Mike, you're not referring to the future land. In future land use, we just have office.
Oh, Brian, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, you're confusing me there because I was. In our future land use map, it's office.
Yep.
And I I feel like that, I agree with what you just said, Mike. We need some in our zoning, but it all needs to be wrapped up into business.
And you're you're absolutely right. We we have in the future land use plan plenty of places that are simply labeled office and that. You're absolutely right. I'm sorry.
That's a dying, you know. All things are going the way we're the dodo.
So we can look at the name of that category, and we can also look at the description, and we can build more flexibility into the description. And. You know, we can, we can rename it something that's a little more appropriate that reflects that. It's an evolved category.
Yeah, maybe it's something more like business service or something like that, that is would encompass service uses or encompass this office uses. And maybe even some lighter retail uses so that it's got a little more of a hybrid category. How does that sound? Would that meet some of those goals? Or we did something like that?
Perhaps.
Yeah, or even even something that describes its role. It is like a commercial transition or something like that. Where it's a transition between your your more intense areas and your less intense areas.
A low intensity employment center, yeah.
Beat a dead horse, but if you look at our, what is considered office. We're just. Chasing what was there when we did this. There there's no areas there that aren't. That are. Developable. All the almost, almost all of the places that are considered office, you know, the county building, the county, the two county buildings downtown. You know, those places are already. You know, the the future of the future land use to me is what we would like to see there.
Sure.
Correct. You know, that, I don't know, maybe I'm being ridiculous.
No, no, not at all.
I I understand what you're saying, that the the category right now speaks more to the past than it does to the future. And and we want to evolve the category to 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 speak more about the future.
Well, and maybe, you know, we have a category called Live Work. And maybe that's what we're looking for there.
I I would be much more to to take some of those pieces of property and put it into something like that. You know, lump those properties into live work because that's more of the. What's coming down the pike.
Sure. You're looking for more versatility than just office, yeah.
Yes. The other thing that we've discussed on and changing the topic just a little bit there, actually quite a bit. We have discussed the. Do we need? Multiple industrial. Zones. Will we, again, the ones that we have are more descriptive than they are prescriptive. They're saying that's what's already there. We've got a heavy industrial, we've got in the future land use plan, we've got heavy industrial and we've got light industrial. Well, probably aren't getting any new heavy industry.
I think we should still be careful, though, because of the marijuana industry that goes into our light industrial.
Yeah, but I'm wondering, I guess I'm what I'm getting at is I'm wondering if that if if we'd be better off just to have it be industrial.
For purposes of the future.
You've got to make a distinction between areas that are appropriate for heavy industry and and light industry and.
I can give you an example. I have, you know, someone that's looking to manufacture batteries, and if we go that route.
Oh.
You know, they might want to try to do alkaline materials within a light and dark, but we would prefer to be light industrial zone, so I worry about that, but.
Okay.
You know, the the special use permits, we can, I suppose, regulate that harder if we wanted to.
Yeah, you 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 have a couple of options. You can maintain the the two separate categories. Or you could, in the description of the industrial category, you could. Define that certain more intense industrial uses should only be developed on properties that have. X feet separation from residential areas, for example. Could do it that way as a relationship to residential.
I saw my struggle with that because we have a lot of those already and. Like one for right now, there's a car dealership that wants to go in and they want to seek a variance because it needs to be ten thousand square foot. Property. They've already been given a variance before, and now they're going to be a, you know, they want to be a car lot again. So I I struggle with these people are just going to come in and get variances. They want variances constantly.
Right, and if you have as a distinct category, then it becomes different than.
If we can make it. Easy to navigate, but the zoning exceptions don't always have to be a yes. I think that would be great. I almost feel as if they meet the zoning exception requirements, we almost have to do it, it feels like. But if we get move away from that idea that we could say no easier, then we could slim them down. But that's just, you know, my opinion writing the reports.
The other. Specific property we need to look at is the old hospital site on Riverside. That the land use plan, future land use plan shows as being quasi-public.
Yes.
And question is is.
But is this the place to do that?
Yes.
It's so it's identified as one of the redevelopment ready sites. So, yeah, that is that we'll be looking at that in more detail at the next meeting, but we can definitely talk about it tonight.
I I didn't mean to, didn't want to get us too far, you know, into the weeds there, but just keep it on the agenda for. Some people.
I think that should stay really flexible, too, because I get a lot of calls. About those properties on what we can do with them. And obviously, they're zoned, you know, whatever. I think they're. ERO or residential office, but I get a lot of calls and people wanting to do things there. So if we can, the more flexible we can be, the better.
Yep.
I I do get quite a few calls about those locations.
Jeremy, can you give us, you know, an idea of what kind of uses people are asking about?
They're mostly asking about. Like. You know, ones they can actually utilize the building in a similar fashion that it was, because a lot of them are, what, small rooms, and then they have the larger rooms. So. I've gotten called a few, I mean, we're looking at, is it Whit Farm up north, Greg? I think it's Whit Farm. There's. I always get Whit Farm and Marvin Farm confused, so. There there's, you know, senior citizen stuff that wants to come in and they've called about those locations. There's a lot of had a few daycare places call about those locations. We still have medical places that do want to go in there. But then there's also other businesses that I have to, you know, push away from zones that they'd like because they can't go into them. And if we were flexible up there, those might not be. The worst places for them. Not saying car dealerships or anything like that, but. You know, I get a lot of calls about developments, and if we could be more flexible, I think we could utilize up there pretty well.
In general, the theme for. To be supported by the plan, but will be implemented in the zoning ordinances. I view as greater flexibility in our zoning districts. Kind of replace the. Restrictions on use with an emphasis on design and, you know, as as things. Meet those design criteria, then you're more comfortable with the with allowing a greater flexibility.
Yes.
In terms of how.
Thank you.
Sure, I'd I'd like to think that. Some of the actions we've taken of late, especially with Plainway. The PUD and with the PUD we did on West or East Miami Street. Where we're now starting to think out of the box quite a bit and listen to what people are bringing to us. So I think. It really sets the tone for us to do what you've been talking about here with making this land use plan much more flexible in the future for us.
We get these out of the box ideas a lot, and I don't want to turn them away. I want to.
Do.
Say yes more.
We do.
Well, and and Rod and Joe, I think we have, we've given you a list of of those properties that are, you know, redevelopment potential properties already. And those are the ones that, of course, we would want to keep some flexibility with, so.
Sure, yeah.
Absolutely. And you've provided for that in other areas and with your master plan before, so you can certainly try to work with that.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Any other thoughts on the land use map before we move on? So this gets us kind of into the policy discussion. We put some bullet points in that memo. I tried to group the housing questions together. So. One thing that we've discussed internally is that in 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 certain parts of the city, it could potentially be appropriate to allow. More multi-unit structures that are that look kind of like single-family structures. I know that there are a few blocks. On the east side that already have quite a few multi-unit structures that are. More or less single-family in appearance, but when you look at them closely, you can see that there's multiple mailboxes and things. So. Kind of working that into more of a policy of. Do we want to allow a certain? A certain amount of each block in in certain parts of the city to. To have more than one unit. Would we want to use accessory dwelling units as a way to potentially? Allow for more. Units to come into the city, you know, with controls. What are some gentle ways that we can we can achieve a little more density in in certain neighborhoods where it's appropriate? I guess this may be the general question. And I guess I'd kind of like to know what the planning commission's comfort level with that is.
I'm very comfortable with there being new development with multi-family, like row houses or something like that. We have, we have. I'm not comfortable with the saying, take this old house and make it into four apartments. We've we've already got plenty of those.
Too many.
Too many, and it and it has, you know. Brought down many of our historic structures and neighborhoods, I think.
And I I think, too, we need to develop something with our our lot lines and our smaller. You know, the 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 two new houses going on the corner of Locust and Maple are perfect examples. We need more of that. We've got a lot of small lots that you could put a brand new house on. Or lots that are a little bit bigger that you could put a duplex that right now we can't.
On Maple, just east of McKenzie. There's a grouping of, I think, four. Small homes that have been built within the last. I don't know, fifteen years or so. You know what I'm talking about, Brian?
Yeah, that isn't that condo development that's.
It's a little condo development there. They're all, they're all detached units. They all have a little bit of yard. It's a very attractive use of that piece of property. And the density is pretty significant there, yeah.
That was a former greenhouse, I think.
Oh, was it? Oh, okay. Something on that order, along with the row houses and townhouses.
Yeah, okay. I'm with Don. I'd like us to be able to encourage row houses or townhouses or new condo developments. I'm with Don, I'd like us to be able to encourage row houses or townhouses or new condo developments. I don't wanna encourage taking old historic homes and breaking them into five and six apartments.
Sure. If you, if you go back and, and I, Lynn, Lynn is still with us, I know that we look at the old school site on the east side there. Having a piece of property like that where you can put in a mixed-use residential, uh you know, barber shop, grocery store, perfect neighborhood hub there. That's a great opportunity there to get the kind of density you're talking about. Kind of structures we're talking about and also a mixed-use.
What was the location? That's the former McKinley School.
Or McKenzie School, or McKinley School, I'm sorry.
We found it looking at that site and Lynn can correct me if I'm wrong, is that uh, the, the rents that are attended to uh, a development there don't support the cost of the development and uh, you know, I, I mean, I think that's a challenge citywide, more so on the, probably on the east side to building new uh units where there isn't some sort of subsidy involved in accomplishing that.
Do we think that there's a, I am of the personal opinion, personal opinion that there's a market for like row houses or condos in town uh for retiree, retirement age people. And that even if they were on the near east side, that people would pay market rates for. But that's based strictly on my own personal needs or wishes.
You know, I, I'd like to ask Greg that question that, you know, from what I've heard or been told that it's difficult for developers to set sales prices that will support their development costs. I mean, the, the development cost is such that they can't, if they set their sales ta- their sales prices, it's higher than any, any value that's in the neighborhood. And I think we saw that as, as we were just talking about the McKinley site. I thought there was a great proposal in terms of, you know, what was it, about twenty-eight townhouses and a couple of little convenience stores or nail salons or whatever. Um, but two things, uh, you know, the market didn't support what the selling price was gonna need to be. And I mean, if you think about that neighborhood around that property, I think they were talking about trying to sell these units for a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars apiece and the surrounding neighborhood just won't support those kinds of dollars. Plus, we ran into the fact that the residents didn't want it. I mean, they just kinda turned it away thinking, or saying that, you know, that would destroy the ambiance of, of the neighborhood and I'm thinking, well, I'm not sure we got a lot of ambience there, but, you know, um, but I, I, again, that's what I've heard about, even on, on both the east side and the west side that, you know, developers or home builders just, they can't get the sales price that they want or need to be able to do, develop the property.
But that's based on their, their survey of what the property, what the surrounding property goes for. And I'm wondering if in fact there were townhouses that sold for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars someplace in town if there wouldn't be a market for that. Now, I realize that the issue with, in McKinley School site is that then it's surrounded by houses and it's selling the thirty-five to sixty thousand dollar range.
Well, and, and, and I agree, Mike, um, you know, but where are there parcels of land within the city, other than like Garfield site and that's, you know, I think gonna go away, although we haven't heard back from M and H pumps. Um, you know, and they were supposed to develop that, we got the McKinley site. There probably are, are other parcels big enough to do townhouses and some, you know, ten to twelve units, but I don't know where they are.
Well, um, I think Lynn Pennant was telling me a while ago that uh, that Big C Lumber is looking to get rid of that warehouse across the street from their main store.
That, that would be wonderful.
You know, I mean, that's just.
But, but, you know, right now for a developer to come in and identify, okay, you know, those warehouses are coming down and that's the place to go. You know, that, they won't know that unless we're doing something to tell, you know, that are coming in or want to come in, that that's gonna happen. I mean, this is the first I've heard of it, so. I and the commissioners can go out and, and promote it.
But I, I, I wonder if we need, in, in terms of if, well, we're, we're talking about policy, in, in, in all dentists, den- gentle dentist, density, excuse me.
May I comment?
Please, please do, Lynn.
Thank you, um, of course, the dog barks right now. I'm so sorry. Gordon, you're on the mark with the developer issues. If you can't get an appraisal to cover your cost, but there is a market for the, the townhouses, the cottages, the bungalows, the, those types of units, no question. I'm sorry, just a moment.
It's usually me struggling with that, so, yeah.
Uh, the one thing that I, I think maybe you were misinformed is that the neighbors in fact are quite supportive. We held community forums, we had uh neighbors come and talk to us. What they did give feedback on those conceptual drawings that were presented that night to them uh was, um, that they felt like there needed to be more playground. Kids are playing on that lot now and we were taking away all the playground, but other than that, there was very positive feedback from the people who came to the community forums.
Our job as a planning commission is to set the stage for what we wanna see and then let the developers come and figure out how to do it. I mean, you know, we're gonna hire an economic development director and that person's gonna be out trying to do just what we're talking about, so we just need to give them the tools to work with. And speaking of the tools to work with, if you read, read through this thirty-page document that they gave us about all the economic development of funding and help that's available, it's out there, folks. You just gotta try to find it and adapt it to your po- your particular project.
Isn't the issue then for your plan is how do you bridge the gaps that might exist between where you wanna go and what the market will bear right now and put into place programs? Whatever, you know, policies, et cetera, that help you to bridge that gap so that you can move forward, which is the purpose of your comprehensive plan being futuristic.
Yes. And I, I think it behooves us to identify these potential locations regardless of the potential difficulties of the development.
Absolutely, yeah, it's aspirational to.
It should be aspirational, yes. They're not all easy sites.
Right, yeah, exactly. No, but so that, and, again, I think we've given you a list of those aspirational sites already.
And, and the housing crisis you're describing is, is felt across the country and certainly in, in metro Detroit area as well, we've, we've met with developers and quite frankly, if you're not in the hottest markets and you're in a market that's uh more modest, uh, there's, they're, they're telling you and they're telling us that there needs to be some type of subsidy there for most of the developments in order to provide for affordable housing. And uh more attainable housing even, that can be, which can be afforded by those people between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent of the median income in your community, so. Um, it's, it's a struggle and uh it's, 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 it's reaching out and trying to get all those resources that you can in order to, in some cases, do public-private partnerships as well.
Yeah, even in, uh, I worked for one relatively vigorous uh, you know, older Detroit suburb and even there, you know, tax abatements are being used to incentivize, you know, larger developments. Because it's just the cost, the, the cost of construction is just so high at the moment.
So, so part of what uh I think was suggested by this slide is, is whether or not you would be comfortable with allowing accessory dwelling units and that can mean, you know, an additional apartment within a existing single-family home that, you know, could be owner-occupied as well as, as a criteria for allowing that. And that, and that doesn't, in, in that case, you don't need to build anything, right? The principal structure is there, there's some cost to modifying it. But it's not nearly the same cost as building something new, as new construction uh in a similar way to what we've done downtown, um although much more affordable than the rental rehab units that we've done downtown. Is that something that the planning commission would be comfortable with? We kind of have that in an ill-defined way as an option in the zoning ordinance right now. Um, I forget what it's termed, but there is a provision in there for something like that. Is that a policy that the planning commission was for?
I'm not sure I'm clear on that because it, again, at one time, uh, and I think in, if not the current comprehensive plan, the prior one to that, we specifically had as a stated goal that we not permit, you know, the creation of apartments within older homes. Or are we talking about something different?
I think we'd have to have a clearly defined definition of what we mean by an accessory dwelling unit.
Exactly.
Because, and, and, and I think that would be for a large discussion. And also, um, you know, I'm wondering how we define appropriate neighborhoods for, for this, I think this discussion is all really, really good and obviously, what we're seeing about the need for housing is reflected through this whole, you know, future plan. Um, so I think these issues need to really um respond and be reflected in, in several places um throughout the, the future plan.
See, I, I think, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
In my mind, you know, if, if, if by accessory dwelling unit, we mean adding on a mother-in-law apartment you know, on a large piece of property and a large house on the west side of town, yes. If it means that somebody can take an old house on the east side and make six apartments out of it, no.
The latter would not be what an accessory apartment would.
But Mike, if you wanted to rent out a room, rent out your, you know, you and I moved downstairs and you rent out the upstairs, you living there as an owner-occupant, I would have no problem with that.
Yeah, I, I do, particularly in using that as an example. My neighborhood are very small lots, that's, you know, in fact barely got room for my house on my lot and if I rented out one of the bedrooms as an apartment or the upstairs as an apartment, that, that's, that's too dense, in my mind, that's too dense of a use in what is a traditional single-family home.
And I might point out that the consultants are recommending that uh we try as poss- much as possible to take those old homes that have been turned into apartments and convince people to turn them back into single-family residences.
Well, that's exactly, that would, see, that would be my goal, so.
I mean, good luck, right? How do we do that?
The more you do that, though, the more you diminish
I know.
Once you make housing within the city.
Understand that. One of the things that could, that you might look at is the housing stock that's closest to the downtown providing for the greatest flexibility to convert some of those to more gentle density because it helps to support the businesses closer that, that are already there. It's kind of that whole concept of getting as many households close to where your, your commercial stock is. But other areas of the city, you might not wanna do that, so it could, you, you could target it into neighborhoods where you think it's appropriate, so that's something to think about as well, I don't know if there's any thought you have about that.
Yeah, I think ultimately you're the arbiters of appropriate. Because, you know, i- it could be a function of lot size or some other factor that uh, that you need to consider.
Well, and, and, and perhaps my opinion is tainted by the, the knowledge that some, you know, Adrian has got some lovely, lovely older homes. Uh, our historic district is a perfect example of that. There's also plenty of them outside the historic district that during World War Two were converted to multiple apartments. And they were rental properties and it was the decline of those neighborhoods.
They're, they're still multi-unit buildings today, I would presume, most of them.
Well, some of them are, some of them have been converted back to single-family.
What if, what if, um, what if one of the occupants in one of the units had to be an owner? Cuz that's what you do with an accessory dwelling, you can write your zoning code that requires that somewhere, whether it's in the accessory dwelling or the principal, that the owner has to reside.
And how does one enforce that?
Um, it can be, it can be done a number of different ways. Um, you could require a, a, a registered, annual registration. You could require, uh, there, there's, you know, that, that's probably the most common is to do that. And, and if it sells, then, you know, some communities require that there be a, a, a review at the time of, of sale to make sure that it's continuing to be enforced, it's just, a lot of it depends on how deep you wanna go with the regulation and the enforcement.
And we do require our rental units to be registered and so in that case, you know.
I would take care of it, yeah, cuz you'd go to check and you, they, they have to show there's an, an owner-occupied unit along with the rental unit.
That can, that can do two things in turn, one, create more housing units without having to build, you know, necessarily build them. It also could be a source of income for older homeowners. You know, who otherwise are struggling to, to continue to afford that piece of property that they've lived in uh for their lifetimes.
Absolutely, a lot of times the, the older, the homeowner ends up going into the accessory unit cuz they don't need the larger principal structure and they rent the principal structure out.
Commissioners, thoughts on this? I've expressed my opinion, I.
I'm not, I'm not really a big fan of the accessory dwelling units. But again, I'm kind of more from the neighborhood that Mike is from and just don't really see it working well, so I've gotta say I'm mostly opposed to it also.
I guess I'm sort of with uh Mike and Krista, I, you know, if you, I live on the west side, if somebody has a half-acre lot and they add a hu- a mother-in-law suite, it's not gonna really be anything negative about that. So, different situation that when you have a smaller lot.
Don't we have the, uh, don't we have the ability to describe what we mean by an accessory dwelling unit? And are not there areas within the city where those are, are, would be very useful um kind of applications for, for this gentle density idea, I'm not sure that we should cast them out, you know, kind of wholesale. Uh, in, in the same way that I'm not sure that we can say all um older homes that have been, you know, adapted for um apartments or whatever are, are all necessarily bad and should be done away within the city. Um, I think somewhere we have to, to allow that, that there are places where that seems to work. And I think that if we're looking ahead and we're looking at, at, at the housing um in the city, it's, it seems to me that an accessory dwelling unit provides us with that flexibility we were talking about earlier, that's, I think, really needed. Um, I, just keeping our options open and reflected, I think, throughout this plan.
Well, one thing we can do is we can uh write for you something about accessory dwelling units that grapples with how to define them that um is written to give you a great deal of control over how and where it would be implemented. Uh, if and when it's implemented and see if you like the language that we come up with for the plan. And then, you know, we can include it if, if the, the planning commission is comfortable including that language. You know, and it's just, we, we can be sensitive to the way this conversation went tonight and just try to write something that we think is gonna work for planning commission.
Joe, that would be.
I think, I think that'd be very helpful because at this point, I'm not a fan of it, but I think if written correctly, it could be fruitful.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's direction enough for us, we can certainly work with that.
And, and then you can leave the detailed implementation to later on when you're at the zoning stage and you might wanna study it in greater detail and, and ultimately. And and ultimately decide on the right location and situation, but we can set the stage for it in the description.
Exactly, yeah.
Very good. Very good. Well, we've probably spent enough time on that.
Somewhat somewhat ancillary to that, um I I did a quick check. I think they're between five and ten short-term rental units in the city right now. Um I just wonder what your thoughts are on on the VRBO Airbnb type units, if there's something, you know. If it's if it's worth addressing in the master plan to you or if you think it's not as big an issue.
Commissioners?
I don't know about necessarily, yeah, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't really see it being something that would need to go into. This plan, but I mean, it may be good to address in another way, not just people. Doing it the way that it's supposed to be done, but people who basically turn a home into a permanent. Uh Airbnb or VRBO, I mean, those I think could be a potential problem. Maybe down the line, but seeing as we don't really have a big tourist. Population here, I don't necessarily know what the plan is where we would need that to be addressed.
The ones I saw were all marketed as um, you know, uh. A place to stay when visiting the Irish Hills, I think that was pretty much the way I saw them marketed.
And the one thing you have to be kind uh. You have to be careful that you don't do. Too much damage to your local hospitality industry. I understand it's a marketplace, but still, we've had two hotels, one open now and one will hopefully maybe open at some point in time, but uh. VRBO and Airbnb takes away from them.
But we, but we addressed that in our zoning ordinance, correct? Don't we have to, didn't we agree that um. You had to get a, just like a rental house, if you want to Airbnb your property, you were supposed, you're supposed to get a light, you know. Register it, do the inspection with Glenn, blah, 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 I mean.
Is that, is that true, Brian? I didn't realize that.
We didn't write it into an ordinance yet.
But we do that.
It it was proposed, but we never, I didn't think we ever put it to a meeting.
No, it it was, it was a proposed discussion, that was all it was.
And I think, I think we concluded that there were so few of them that wasn't worth putting a whole lot of effort.
I mean, I can always write something up, um but like Mike said, there wasn't too many of them at the time.
Okay, gentlemen, yeah, Joe, uh I, it sounds like this is not something we want to spend a whole lot of time.
Okay, sounds good to me. A couple of other things, uh we've talked a little bit about the um consolidation or reconsideration of industrial zoning districts already. Um thoughts about single-family districts, there's a number of them, uh some of them are quite similar to each other. I don't know if it's it's worth thinking about as part of your zoning plan, you know, possibly calling for. Some simplification of uh the single-family zoning districts, uh perhaps some consolidation of those.
I would be consolidating those, in my opinion. Since I'm looking at fences and all that stuff constantly, I see the difference between one, two, three and four. I want to consolidate the commercial for sure. Um when I look at residential, I see a vast difference in those, I, three and four, yes, they're similar, one and two, yes, they're similar, but there are. Slight differences, I mean, if we were to consolidate it, I'd rather it be one and two into one and three and four into one.
That's what I was thinking too, Jeremy.
Because, I mean, the the size of the lots varies hugely and even between one and two, they vary. Very much, I mean, if I hear someone has a R1 lot, I automatically know, yeah, you're going to be able to have your shed, you're going to be able to. I mean, I still review it, but I know you're going to have this, R2, ninety-nine percent sure, R3, eh, R4. I definitely have to to stare at your stuff for a little while, so I think there's a huge difference between those four. So if we do consolidate just down to to two, maybe three, if we could.
We talked about industrial zoning already.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Possible consult consolidation there.
Yep, and it sounded to me earlier on that there was some some interest in greater utilization of form-based zoning and. Um freeing up the land uses a little bit more uh in a lot of parts of the city.
Yes. And we've, we've actually already done that to a certain extent with our downtown.
Yes, yep. Okay, so that that's something that your zoning plan can address um greater implementation of form-based zoning.
I think you guys should have Greg um explain to you his idea of um. The use and the the form of it. He explained it very well to me, I think he can explain it very well. Well, I I mean, they as basically, you know, if you're comfortable with how it looks, you don't care how it's used. And uh I mean, we've, as Max says, we've done that to a very limited degree downtown, but we haven't really done much with. You know, we have some design standards for downtown, but. That doesn't translate that into freeing up the uses as Joe suggested and and we take that extra step. Uh so that we have maximum flexibility where we're comfortable with how uh the design is going to control. Uh what comes of that.
Sure, and it's not within reason, of course, you know, you don't put a C and C machine shop in the middle of a residential neighborhood, but um, you know. Um you you can permit a great deal more flexibility if you have a, if you can have confidence that. The form is going to be correct and things are gonna. You know, that the, the people who live nearby are going to be protected from the externalities of what's going on inside the building.
And then the more walkable areas, the ground floor uses are the ones that are the ones that are usually the most sensitive you want to pay attention to, you want the ones that generate interest for pedestrians. Whereas the upper floors, you tend to want to allow for a lot more flexibility.
Okay, yeah. Uh next point is urban agriculture and shared use of land, uh what place we think that. Has in the future of the city.
As long as there's no chickens.
That's a matter of opinion now, you know.
I know, I know, that's why I brought it up.
We're thinking goats, like.
I'm not sure I know enough to know what the issues are.
Somebody mentioned earlier, thinking out of the box, there is tremendous change in transition that is going on. In the agricultural industry right now, that is creating opportunities for some of your blighted buildings. That you've mentioned under utilized buildings, um and for other activity that is agricultural based. You have a small segment of it that there's been an interest in, in the cannabis, marijuana, weed pot, depending upon where you're from. You know, as to what you call it and and which generation you're from, as to what name it's known, but that's a tiny bit of it today. You're seeing a lot of uh meat that's being generated just from a few cells inside laboratories that. You wouldn't know what they were doing, it is agriculture, you have a lot of aquaponics that is being done inside of buildings. It it is, the industry is changing, and that includes all kinds of crops. The the transition is occurring extremely rapidly, right, just right now.
Well, in part, we're, we are, I believe we've already demonstrated an openness to that and we've had folks talk to us about uh. What is, what is the term for growing fish inside?
Right, aqua, it's aqua, it's some kind of aquapon.
Aquaculture, yeah.
Aquaculture and uh I think. We've uh, our zoning ordinance already permits that in industrial areas, so.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the other, the other element of it is um, you know, community gardens and that, yeah.
So you wouldn't want to have it just too industrial if you want to encourage urban gardening. You know, I think about where we have a vacant lot, and we talk about whether the people on either side of it might buy half of it. Or whether they might want to turn it into an urban garden for the neighborhood. Lynn has probably encouraged a lot of that with her neighborhood work.
I don't think that we have anything to prohibit that.
Most likely you don't prohibit it now.
We do, no.
No.
Well, actu- actually, you know, as a sing, it depends on how the lot would be. Owned, but you know, it would not be listed as a principal use in any of our single-family.
Well, that's true, that's true.
Yeah.
Right.
Probably, well. Shall we try to address that in the, in the plan relative to urban gardening or or residential gardening?
Yeah, we can absolutely address it, we've, we've done it in other plans, so, you know, we can certainly talk about it. Yeah, and and it dovetails with a few of the other things that we're looking at. One of which is resiliency, uh we have a a resiliency component that we're going to be building into the plan that talks about, you know, planning for future. Disruptions essentially. And urban agriculture can actually be um. You know, an effective bulwark against a lot of um disruptions, so um. Uh yeah, we we can certainly integrate it into your land use plan, but. Uh last bullet on this slide, uh it's just kind of a general policies to address homelessness and transience. Zoning doesn't offer a lot of tools to do this, other than um expanding your housing stock. And you know, attempting to increase affordability, really, um those are the main things that we can offer in terms of, you know. A zoning plan. Um but, you know, your thoughts are certainly welcome on um. You know, how, on on what you'd like to see in terms of addressing uh these issues in the city.
You know, I think other than already addressing, trying to already address affordable housing and and increased housing. I'm not sure we want to make a specific point. Out of the homelessness and transience. We have addressed, we have addressed that we allow for homeless shelters uh in our ordinance as it is. And have permitted at least two that I know of. Commissioners, thoughts on that? Like I said, I'm not sure I would make it a point, a point of emphasis in the plan.
I wouldn't. Yeah, I I wouldn't think that we would need to address it because we're pretty limited in what we can actually do, so. I don't really see it adding a whole lot of value.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. Uh just to, this is the last of these slides, um so. Redevelopment of overparked sites is another thing uh that we we need to be thinking about, Adrian Mall certainly stands out as as one. Uh but des- particularly on the south side of town, there are quite a few sites that have a lot of parking.
Yes.
Um so, you know, thinking about, obviously outlots are always one thing that you can think about in a commercial area. Where you've got lots of excess parking. Uh and, you know, we usually think about lots as, you know, commercial in nature. Um but other things that we might think about, you know, with these sites, um, you know, Adrian Mall. In particular, uh stands out as a site that that may ultimately be in transition to something else. Um so I'm I'm interested in hearing what you, you know, what you think about particularly that part of town, the this, the south side. Uh commercial area.
No, it's not just a small, there's, there's a, there's probably three or four large sites. That's the most prominent one, but uh. A former Kmart store, which is only half-occupied, although I think that may be in the township. But uh there's three or four, what were big box stores that are now, you know, have. Ten percent of their former use, so. With huge parking lots. So yes, that's, that's a point that we should address in some manner.
And it's likely going to be. A non-retail use.
Yes, sure, yeah.
I mean, you know, in certain spots, it could even be a place where, you know, you could, you could get some multifamily out of some of that area, you know.
Yes. Okay.
So we will address transitioning. Of those parcels, making some notes here. Okay, I I mentioned resiliency already, um sustainable design uh sort of falls on from resiliency, resiliency and sustainability aren't quite the same thing. But they're related. So as we think about, you know, making recommendations on form-based codes. Site design could also include some sustainability standards and um and address, you know. If you're, if you're doing things in a sustainable way that addresses your resiliency as a community, um so. There's kind of a, there's a lot of things that can be be done with sustainable design that also improve the next point, which is. You know, aesthetics of the community, um because a lot of it can be done in concert with landscaping.
Joe, could you give a a quick example of sustainable design or?
Sure, I mean, there are some obvious examples, like, you know, alternative energy and things like that.
Oh, okay.
But there are also less obvious examples, like, for instance, uh. Passive stormwater management, uh particularly on larger commercial sites where you can use rain gardens and things to um. To manage a lot of the stormwater on the site, and you can build a really appealing landscape. That helps aesthetically and also, you know, filters waste and 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 prevents flooding. It does a lot of things all at once, you know, so there are some, some concepts like that that we can.
Goes back to the overparked sites.
Exactly, yeah, right, because right now you've got storms full of water just sheeting off of those sites. And and yeah, there's definitely things you can do um to to break up sites like that.
Incorporating green roofs, that's, that's another item, there's a, there's a lot, there's a menu of items there.
Yep, exactly. And enhanced landscaping standards is one way that um some of those areas like that south side of town. Can be made more appealing.
Yeah, the the whole concept of street trees and changing the way the corridor looks like from the roadway. Instead of driving and seeing large open parking lots with few streets, street trees. Starting to incorporate those in and changing the character of the roadway and making it, evolving it into something different.
And it goes back to resiliency, because having that canopy can reduce the heat island effect caused by that large expanse of pavement as well.
We had some discussions about some of our properties on the south side of town there, uh just a, with regards to what you're suggesting. So I think that makes great sense to incorporate this.
Yes, you're here.
Excellent, thank you. Uh I had this one here, and then this last one here, pink zoning, um I'm not just going to dump that term on you, here's what it is. Um so it's basically designed to aid redevelopment in disinvested areas. And the idea is reducing red tape for small-scale projects, because a lot of times. Projects that could significantly enhance an area that's been disinvested are not necessarily that large. They're kind of marginal projects that improve things here and there, but the cost might be somewhat prohibitive. Process might be somewhat prohibitive for the person who is considering doing that. So pink zoning can include pre-approved plans. Um for instance, if you were trying to get some duplex development in a certain part of town to uh refresh a neighborhood or something. You could have a pre-approved layout uh for a duplex that. You know, you've uh you've developed in, you know, consultation with a designer. And if someone comes in and wants to do that, they're pretty. And if someone comes in and wants to do that, they pretty much can hit the ground running with that pre-approved plan. That's one way that you can do pink zoning. It's not necessarily the only way. Often involves reduced regulation to permit organic growth and redevelopment. We've already talked about that somewhat in terms of increasing flexibility of the available uses in certain areas of town. Can also be accomplished via an overlay. So you could have your underlying zoning in place. But your, your kind of your pink overlay, if you will, might apply to a few different parts of the city that you're looking to enable some, some quick action in. It's a, this is sort of a new urbanist concept. It's, it's, the, the term's only been around for a little while now. But it's something to consider, particularly when you have lots of sites that you're looking for redevelopment on. Or neighborhoods that you're looking to revitalize.
Well, and we, we just had a, probably a good example of this in the last couple of months where we ended up for a single relatively small site had the fellow do a planned unit development.
Well, it's, it's a good example of, of a, of a project that we, you know, we wanted to have and we wanted, and we were able to accomplish through flexibility. However, our process was cumbersome for him.
That was my point. Yes.
Okay, so this, there's some interest in, in pursuing this as a recommendation. All right. I mentioned those, those potential new categories that we had discussed internally here. Don't want to spend too much time on them, but in-town residential was one. And that's sort of a, an evolution of the live work category from the last plan. And then blended residential is sort of outside of the older parts of town, trying to find ways to permit a variety of housing types in certain, in certain areas. To create some more concentrations of, of residential. But those are something, those are things that we can revisit when we're talking about the, the land use plan in more detail at our next meeting. Okay. And then that brings us to the last bit, and Howard's going to talk a little bit about the economic assessment. Won't be going into too much detail on the toolbox, but just the, the assessment.
Hey Joe, can you skip that slide and go just into the numbers for a couple of minutes?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, and then come back to it.
Okay.
Just what I, you know, I don't want to go over the numbers in detail. You've had a lot of discussion tonight where you've actually almost, you know, gone in more detail about most of it. The fact of the matter is that you have a significant possibility of expanding your housing stock. Okay, given the number of residents in the general area that will be moving and would like to stay in the area if they have the opportunity and the kind of housing that they're looking for. You have other new households that are being created that were also mentioned previously. You have other opportunities much like that. So if you try to maintain market share, and market share is an important concept, you can build a number of housing units. You've already identified in your discussion sites, including downtown, et cetera. Rod said something earlier and I would just reiterate that. And people have to remember that downtowns originally were the place where people not just conducted business, but they lived within a couple of blocks of the area. And the best thing you can do to create that kind of synergy in downtown to make it work from a commercial standpoint is to have additional housing in and near it so that it becomes 24/7/365. So you've got, you've got some real housing opportunity for smaller households, for larger households. And yes, because of what's happened in the housing market and it, the, the cost factor is something that we have to overcome, but I'll talk about that when we go back to that first slide. Go on to the next slide if you, if you might.
There you go.
Okay. It's already been mentioned, in fact, too, the office market and the office market situation has changed. Pre-COVID and COVID has had an impact on the office market. It's one of the areas it has. Pre-COVID, WeWorks and that concept where people were sharing space was going gangbusters. Okay? Because of the fear be of being in close proximity to somebody else sharing space, all those factors, that's been diminished significantly at this point in time. At some point when we feel safe and we go from a pandemic or whatever you choose to call it to something that is endemic in our society, just like the flu and the common cold. We will, we will move back to some of that. But the fact of the matter is that prior to COVID, 41% of all new office space was already being built in homes. Okay, since COVID, it's probably up to 90% right now. Okay? And my suspicion it's going to fall back to 70 to 50%, but we don't need a whole lot of clusters prepared from a land use standpoint for pure office anymore because it is being in mixed-use kind of activity and being done largely in the homes. And even if when we move back to that clustered kind of office space, it takes much less space than what it used to in the future. So while we have a significant, what seems to be a large amount, somebody says, gee, we could have 47,000 square feet of space. If you take 50% of it out and, and say that that's over the next, you know, 10, 15 years, it's not a lot of space on a regular basis. We already have buildings out there that can probably accommodate it. And we may see some new buildings. Perhaps something medical related or something else, you know, on one of these best parking lots that we have associated with the malls, et cetera. Joe, go on the next one. I think there's, should be one more data. And, and the same thing is true with retail. We know that retail is changing. It's continuing to change. The amount of space needed for any retail operation is declining rapidly and going to continue to decline. And the amount of online growth that we've seen has sped up. Okay, COVID did not create that. It was our, as you know, it was already happening. Amazon and the others were getting huge before that. Walmart was shifting to online. It just sped up that whole process. There will be some that will come back. The ones that have been hurt largely around the country are downtowns and one specific function in the downtown, and that is restaurant activity, food service activity. What I tell people and what you, what you should realize that if you have, if somebody has a building that has, was a restaurant and it closed down for whatever reasons, retirement, COVID, whatever the factors are, please try to save the structures, okay, the, the kitchen facility because in open, somebody else will come in when we feel safe again as a society to go out there and be there and be in that space. Someone will come in because the most expensive part of opening that restaurant is the kitchen. If it's in place, it gets held. So a lot of this space, the large numbers that you're seeing, again, when you take out 50% or 60% more that is online and you take out another 20 or 30% that whether if you live in the township that, you know, is nearby or you live in Adrian itself. People go from one to the other so that you're never able to capture all of that new space at any given time. I think that was it. To go back to the, that first slide of mine, Joe.
This one?
Yes. Okay. And when you start looking and we're not going, I don't think we're going to go over the toolbox today. That's for another day and, and more discussion on economic development at that point in time. You've used a lot of tools that are available out there. And some of them can of course be better before you've identified tonight. You know, a lot of your priorities from a goal standpoint and what was really important to you. And you've indicated a lot of the issues that are out there. In this, there are seven factors that really are pieces of a pie that fit together and work together. If you think about it, whether or not we're talking about downtown, a neighborhood, commercial area, your industrial areas, your blighting properties, et cetera. And number one is the driving force, whether if it's for employment, whether if it's for retail, no matter what it is, expansion of housing is critical. Where, wherever you're comfortable in adding new households and new housing units associated with those households and whatever form that takes from an economic development standpoint, that is your number one factor that will generate more activity, more business within your community. And that will be generated by, I think you probably have one of, one of the people who's online tonight. You know, who would like to move somewhere else if you can accommodate him in the kind of household and the kind of housing unit that he wants to see. There's all kinds of new ways of ownership that are being created out there, shared ownership that moves away from just pure rental right now. So you've got that expansion of housing opportunity. We've identified the market on the earlier page. Code enforcement, which I know, you know, you, you've kind of been doing that. There's some transitions that you need to take a look at when you move into your policy standpoint, when you move further into your plan. That blends with the expansion of housing and other factors, including your blight, et cetera. You need to make sure that it is not of benefit to the person to hold the property without making an investment in it forever. Okay? And most often what happens, and when you look at your own programs and policies, you'll see that you treat an occupied building and inspection of it differently than you treat an unoccupied building. And what that does is provides the stimulus for the, for the building to stay unoccupied for a given period of time. So it's something you need to talk about and address as you move further along in this process. You've had some cooperative property owner collaboration. There can be more of it. If you look at these pieces, okay, so now I've got code enforcement and I want to bring everything up to a normal standard. Well, where is my return on that to be able to make that investment in there? Probably not initially, but if you can get a group of people or expand the group of people you already have in your community that will do this is make people an offer to come in that they, you know, that they can't afford to pass up. Sometimes it means they open their books up, but that greater cooper, collaboration with the property owners is something that you need to take a serious look at too. And I think, you know, as you further your, your movement in the development of the plan. Creation of temporary space expansion. It was said before that the region isn't really looking for industrial activity. Okay, that your regional economic development force. Industrial activity has changed as well. Okay, it's happening in small spaces. It's happening through entrepreneurship. It's happening through that creativity. It's happening through technological innovation. Whether if that's in the batteries that were mentioned before that, or in drone activity or making the part of the drone that is important. It's happening on a very much smaller scale today. And what you're missing right now, you've got some large spaces that are available. You've got empty properties available. But do you really have the space to create a short-term space for somebody who needs 1,000 square feet right now, but can grow into 10,000 or 15,000 square feet? Chances are you have, in fact, I know that you have very little of it right now. So you need to create temporary space. When you look at the downtown, you've got a lot of people in your community who are involved in arts, crafts and in doing things as a side business inside their homes and other places right now. Give them the opportunity more than what you're doing right now. And I know you have an incubator and things like that, but greater opportunity to be able to do that indoors, outdoors. It also adds excitement and brings people into the area because it gives them something different to look at. Entrepreneurship is that other piece that fits right in there with that pie. You've done some entrepreneurs have, I said, you have, you have a facility right now, but you need to establish a linkage with various college, the two colleges, you know, that you have in your area with others outside the area so that you're saying, we've got the opportunity here. We've got the space for you. We can make you a deal so that you can get in here in a very, very affordable manner with a return to us that we're willing to take over the long-term versus the short-term. Okay, and opening it up and making sure that everybody knows that Adrian is the place that you can come to if you want to start an operation. And that leads to permanent operations. It leads to expansion of your residence. So that you, if, if a senior decides to move out into a new unit that you've created for them, they can then, you now have a young person or someone else that's entrepreneur, doesn't live in your area who can occupy that unit that they're in right now, small, large, whatever the case may be. And through the entrepreneurship that links back into that other activity too. There's been a dramatic change in how business is being financed and crowdfunding has shifted dramatically to become paramount in that funding of new industrial, commercial. I don't care what it is, activity because they changed the regulation on crowdfunding and it allows it to open up to a lot of people that formerly couldn't do things. I'll give you an example. Right now there's an entity in Michigan that is trying to develop, putting solar panels in streets, in sidewalks, et cetera. So that your communities become 30, you know, six, 365 day, 24-hour operations to create that walkability, to enhance that. Very small, you can get, you can invest in them through crowdfunding. They don't have the resources themselves. But they're raising millions of dollars to be able to do all the permitting they need, get all the intellectual property security that they need, et cetera, to be able to accomplish that. You can set up a local one with local people who invest in Adrian and it can be done at $100, $50 clips. And that's never happened before, but it is now available and can be done. So you can set that up to a greater extent than what you have done before. You, I think your manager said, Greg said that there was going to be, you're going to hire an economic development person. It's one of the things that should be looked at to bring private sector resources into your area that are really already from your area. Finally, in some cases, you, that person and you will probably have to look at local development interests. In the documents that you have, we laid out various processes that can be used to do that. I know Giffel's Webster is very familiar with it and involved with it. So, you know, as you move forward, I think you look at these seven pieces. They all really fit together. And whether if we talk about industrial, whether if we talk about new housing or we talk about our, or rehab housing, whatever the case may be. But new units and bringing new households into the area and creating new economic development activity of any sort. They really work together as pieces that will benefit you greatly. And should in, you know, you need to look at is incorporation in some form as part of your goals, objectives, however the form it takes in your plan, your comprehensive plan that you're developing now. Joe, that's it. Questions? Certainly.
All right. So I guess that takes us to where we're headed next. As Greg said at the beginning, we are going to be doing some supplemental public input over the next month. We'll be looking at drafting your new goals and objectives. And the, the land use plan are planning on our next meeting in March. And you know, we'll, we'll discuss those elements then, as well as a few other things, redevelopment sites in particular. And then we'll have one other meeting in April to kind of look at a full draft and then we will move forward from there.
I'd like to make a request. If you could get the materials to us a little bit earlier next time around, that would be great.
Yes, yeah.
I, I shared some frustration I have, but you've done a really good job of erasing that tonight because I thought this was a great presentation. I feel we really got engaged tonight. So thank you very much and we'll look forward to the next step.
I was going to say the same thing. This was a productive meeting. I was going to make the dig. I wish we'd done it six months ago. Thank you. Yes, better late than never, true.
All right. Well, I, I thank you all for your, your, your attention and your, your comments this evening. It was really, really an excellent conversation. I feel like we have some solid direction. And yeah, I, there was a lot of great insight. So I, I appreciate that and I appreciate your time. And yeah, we look forward to doing it again.
Absolutely.
Any, any closing comments from commissioners? No? Lynn, thank you for joining us. Glad you could be here. Lynn, thank you for joining us, glad you could be here.
Thank you for allowing me to participate.
But it, it's an open public meeting. Greg? Anything for the good of the order?
Uh, no, no additional thoughts, I'm pleased with our discussion tonight, though.
Okay, well, planning commissioners, we'll see you Tuesday night at our regular meeting at seven o'clock. Jeremy, there's not a ZBA meeting, is there?
No, there's not, and I'll have the packets to you ASAP.
Okay.
Waiting on a developer to finalize, um, the site plan, which they did, so you should be getting those tomorrow.
So we'll start Tuesday at seven o'clock.
My apologies.
Thank you all very much. Howard.
See you next time.
Everybody.
Take care. Good seeing everyone.
Take care, everybody.